I'd like to call this meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney? Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. I'd like to call on Pastor Ken Fielding for a few words.
Pastor Dave Adams.
Hi, Pastor Dave Adams.
I'm a little shorter, but we'll send it in the right direction though, so. Good evening, let's pray. Father in heaven, we just thank you for, to be able to come and humble ourselves, Lord, before you. Father, I just thank you for how good you are, how your presence is here. And Father, I pray that you would give us hearts to know and to sense your presence. Father, your word says that we're to pray for our leaders and for those who are in charge over us, Father. We just thank you, Father, for the faithfulness of the men and women that are lined up along these walls in the council and our mayor. Father, we pray for them. We pray, Lord, as they have so many decisions, so many options, so many opinions. Lord, we pray for your wisdom, for your hand upon them. We pray that you would protect them. Father, I thank you for the men and women who served this city, and I thank you for their faithfulness, Lord, in sometimes dangerous situations, for your grace. Father, we pray for your help. We pray for those in need in our city, Lord, those who are struggling in poverty and sickness. Father, those who are struggling in families and fatherlessness and motherlessness and so many difficult things. Lord, we pray, God, help us. We look to you tonight, Father. We look to you for wisdom, for guidance, for instruction. And Father, we pray for peace, and we pray that there would be unity. And we just thank you, Lord, that we can come to you now, tonight, in this setting. And now, Lord, we give you the glory and the honor and the praise, for you are worthy. We love you, Father. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please stand and join me with a pleasant reading.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is agenda changes. Do the commissioners have any agenda changes? I would like to delete item eight C. Commissioner McKinney is not here tonight, and that involves his department, so I'd like to put this off till the next meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion? In a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. We have Kamala Bangs.
The item I was speaking about just got deleted.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Okay.
It'll be fun anyway.
Okay, and that's all we have for citizens' comments. Item number six is the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on September 15th, 2015 at 7:00 p.m. Bills, vouchers 1-2-1, 8-4-8 through 1-2-1, 9-4-3 down on First Merit Bank, total $447,715.41 in a proclamation, National Red Ribbon Week, October 25th through the 31st, 2015.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolutions as follows. Seven A is resolution of commendation, 20 years of service for Warren T. Ferry. He is not here. Eight B is resolution of commendation, 20 years of service for...
Excuse me. That's a numbered resolution. You'll have to take a motion and a vote.
Oh, okay. Is there a, it's a numbered resolution, so we need a motion and a second and a vote.
So moved.
So moved on the resolution of commendation for Warren T. Ferry. We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item seven B is a resolution of commendation, 20 years of service for Brian Lance Dowdell. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney's absent. Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Lance, you want to come forward? Come on.
Right in front. They're going to put you right in front of them. Now, this is interesting.
Got to get your picture taken, so.
I just want to tell a little story about Lance.
(laughing).
This is, it's just a little story. I first met Lance when he was actually, I think, this big, not about that big. And I first, when I moved here in Zion in 1976, he lived across the street from me. He was this little kid running around the neighborhood, and I taught him to, how to play basketball.[353.00][353.00](laughing). He's what? I don't know.
Al, he's a class of 1988 ZB2, correct, Lance?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
I'm not going to ask how old you were then. This is the city of Zion, a resolution of commendation, 15 R-23, whereas Brian Lance Dowdell has completed 20 years of dedicated and loyal service for the city of Zion, and whereas, said Brian Lance Dowdell, has not only won great admiration for his service to the Zion Public Works Department from city officials and fellow employees, but from Zion residents whom he serves willingly and enthusiastically, and whereas, it is the desire of the city council, on behalf of the citizens of this community, to express sincere and profound appreciation to Brian Lance Dowdell for giving generously of his time and efforts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Zion extends to Brian Lance Dowdell its humble expression of esteem for serving faithfully and well, and extends its best wishes for continued employment, good health, success, and prosperity for many years to come. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the council and a suitable copy presented to him, dated at Zion, Illinois on the 6th day of October, 2015. Signed, Al Hill, Jim Taylor, Loing Deteen, Mike McDowell, and Billy McKinney. Diane. (applause). Like to, 15 minutes for speech?
(laughing).
(inaudible). I want to first, you know, my wife has supported me the past 10 years, putting all my, thank you so much. My whole family, I want to put a whole more work, everybody's room, I mean, we're all one big happy family, so, I mean, I've got, I have to do the best I can, and big round, I thank you as well. You know, I'm my butt off time.
(laughing). This already took 18 years on finding a sweeper you could fit in.
(laughing). Mike, thank you. Everybody here, all the commissioners and everybody who supports the city of Zion, I just thank everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
(applause).
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Lance? (inaudible).
Item number seven C is a resolution of commendation for pastors Tim and Judy Eddy, their 30th anniversary of Trinity Christian Church. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion? In a second. Is there further discussion?
I'd like to say something. I read your resolution from you and the council, and the pastor and his wife were very thankful and grateful for it, and they said to send their thanks along back to the council, to you and the council. So, thank you.
Thank you. This was presented...
Sunday.
Sunday?
Yes.
And we're passing it today. And I would like to read it. Oh, we need a, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. It's a resolution of commendation presented to pastors Tim and Judy Eddy in appreciation of 30 years' service. How beautiful upon the mountains are the feet of him who brings good news, who publishes peace, who brings good news of happiness, who publishes salvation, who says to Zion, "Your God reigns." Isaiah 5:7. Whereas, Tim and Judy Eddy, pastors of Trinity Christian Church in Zion, Illinois, have completed 30 years of service to the congregation of Trinity Christian Church. And whereas pastors Tim and Judy Eddy have answered God's calling to feed his followers with knowledge and understanding, have kept watch over the souls of those at Trinity Christian Center for three decades. Their service to their church family, their community, and their God has been a work of faith, a labor of love, and a steadfastness of patience and hope. They are cut from the same fabric as those who proclaim the gospel and live by the gospel as they act on behalf of men before God. Whereas pastors Tim and Judy Eddy's ministries have and continue to be characterized by the demonstration of love and respect, the creation of unity, and the fostering of all worthy and lofty attributes that collectively have built a healthy church, one that nurtures the body, mind, and soul of all who call Trinity Christian Center their church home. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Zion, Illinois, that in the name of the people of the city, it does hereby with great esteem and utmost respect commend and congratulate you, pastors Tim and Judy Eddy, on your 30th anniversary. The city of Zion is proud to claim your church family is one of its own, and recognizes the positive impact your church has on the character of the Zion community. Dated the 6th day of October, 2015, at Zion, Illinois. So, thank you to pastors Tim and Judy Eddy. Item number eight is consider passing ordinances as follows. Eight A is granting a variance for Zion Municipal Code Section 102-32, parentheses, A, parentheses, parentheses, three, parentheses, bulk regulations, second reading.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there further discussion? Before we pass this, I just want, so that everybody here understands, this is a variance allowing a church at 3244 Gilead Avenue with a new front entrance setback being 10 feet from the property line and 27 feet from the curb line, which is an additional 12 feet out front. So, that's what this is about. And I think, just so that you know, this is the second reading, so we looked at it at our last meeting. That's why there's not a lot of discussion about it, I think. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item eight B is amending the Zion Municipal Code Section 10-7 and 10-9 regarding building permit fees per Mayor Hill. This has been brought to our attention, and I'm, this may get a little bit confusing. I just got to be sure I... This is, was brought to our attention, and if you look on your, if you have an agenda, there's the item nine D, which is a considered request for reduction of permit fees for Mount Zion Development Corporation per Director Iansen. And so, this was brought to our attention that the Mount Zion Development Corporation is having a large and very expensive remodel, and their building permit fee came in at $22,000. And they came in to request that the building permit fee be waived, and Director Iansen indicated, which is absolutely true, that he cannot waive building permit fees. And he thought that the $22,000 amount was pretty high, so he suggested 50%, and he talked with Commissioner Monk and Al Rogers, who's the manager of the facility, and they thought that cutting it in half was a reasonable suggestion. So, that's where, that's where that was. And Rich came in to talk to me about it, and Commissioner McDowell and Commissioner McKinney have both, on previous occasions, asked that we have, we set a policy for this, so that every time there's a building permit fee to a nonprofit or a church, that it doesn't come before the council, that Rich should have the authority to enforce the policy that we approve. So, I've put together the policy. And you have, the policy before you now is for, as you have seen, what we did with, and the church, or the corporation was under pressure from a grant that they needed to get going on this project, so we needed, they needed a building permit. And what we did is they wrote, I apologize for the hassle that it cost everybody, but they wrote two checks to the city, one for $11,000, both of them for $11,000. So, if you had decided that, in the future, that there'll be no break for religious organizations or churches, that the city would have a check for $22,000. If we decided that it would be 50%, we would cash one check and give the other check back to them. And if you decided that it would be, we would waive all fees, we would just give both checks back to them. That way, we recovered, they recovered, they could get their building permit, and they have since received their building permit. So, I've brought a policy before you, and there are a couple of changes. If you look at the ordinance, you will, you will see the, on section 10-7, this is, any permit may be renewed for a period of six months upon application, being made for such renewal within a year, and payment of a fee of $200. This is if the permit is granted, and the permit allows work for one year. And if you don't begin your work within a year, there's a, and you want to come in for another permit, the old fee was $75, I'm suggesting it be raised to $200. All the other fees before you are the same for single-family residential duplex or condominium residential. For commercial industrial warehouse, those are all the same, they're 2% of the total cost estimates of the building. If you turn to page two of the ordinance, there's a, this is, there's a X section, and it says civic church and service organizations shall pay 50% of ordinary and customary permit fees. Y says governmental taxing bodies shall be exempt from ordinary and customary permit fees, because with governmental bodies, it's just taking money from one pocket and putting it in the other in our community. And I also think that, I don't think that governmental units have to follow our building codes. I thought that that was just a recent court decision. Is that correct?
They're still...
They're still talking about it. But anyway, so, and I'm bringing this policy as a starting point. I'm not suggesting that it be 50%. I would just like to have a policy. I'd like to get the policy established today, so that Rich can proceed in the future without having to bring every waiver to the council. And I think it puts Rich in a bad position, the way it is right now, because he's telling people he can't give them a waiver, and then they come to the city council, and then they, inevitably, churches get waivers, and it makes us look like heroes, and it makes Rich look bad, because he's told them no. And I don't think that's fair. So, I'd like to have a policy established that we will live by from here on in, or until you decide to change it, but that Rich can extend out. So, I think it's a good... What's the pleasure of the council?
Yeah, I think it's a good compromise. And this doesn't prohibit any organization from making a request of the council for a waiver, but it does set what our fee structure is, and I think it's, I think it's good that we have a fee structure like this. The reason I'd be in favor of a reduction of a fee to civic church and service organizations is because of what they contribute to the community. And that's kind of a, an unknown variable, how much these organizations contribute, but there have been some people that have researched this and tried to put a definition or a value, quantitative value, on what churches provide for communities. And some research was done at the University of Pennsylvania by a professor there in the social sciences department, Ram Nan, and he's been doing this for quite some time. And in 1997, based on his research, he felt like the average congregation contributed $140,000 to a community, just by the services that they provide. Counseling, volunteer services, building, and environmental help, and he's got a whole list of things that churches provide. But in 2011, he revised that statistic, and I guess with the difference of the value of the dollar, came up with a number of $476,000 that the average congregation contributes to a community. So, there is value in what these civic and church groups contribute. So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this revision of our building permit fees.
We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. I would like to discuss, I guess I'd like to throw out a couple of other things that we could, I guess that one of the things that you said just made me sit back, is that I think if we're going to adopt a policy, people can come and make requests that they be waived. We can, everybody can come to the city council, but I think we have to, if we're going to adopt this policy and give this to our building department to enforce, that we have to make a commitment that we're probably going to stick with the policy. But it would be few and far between, because I think everybody needs to be treated the same, and that's what this will do. And the other thing that I just wanted to bring up is, again, this was one suggestion. If you think that, and we haven't talked about this, so, if you think that it might be a good idea that if somebody comes in with a building permit fee of, and let me back up. Waiving a building permit fee of $22,000 was like, oh my, I mean, that's a lot of money. I don't mind so much waiving permit fees for $400 or $200 or $150, but with something this big, it was like, oh my goodness. So, I guess if you would want to consider, I mean, you could amend this to say that anything under $1,000 will get waived at 100%, or if you just want to keep everything at 50%, that's something that we can, we can still decide here tonight. If you want to have steps, or if you just want to go with the 50% reduction for everybody, that's, that's fine with me.
I'd like the 50%.
Okay.
You know, if there's extenuating circumstances that, or we're not in a building project that would warrant waiving a permit fee, then we could take that into consideration. But otherwise, our, I think our fee structure should stand, and I think a 50% is, is a good measure.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. So, Commissioner, you can pick up your check and lay out.
Okay. Thank you, comrade. Let me clear something up if I may. When we went and asked the director of building, we used the way of fees as a starting point. We did not expect the fees to be waived. In my personal opinion, I do not, I feel that this building fee should not be waived. But since that was excessively high, then we was always, you know, prepared to pay 50% of the $1,251. So, and the check is in the, in your pocket. In fact, two checks, in fact.
Right.
So, we can take up on the check.
Yep. Okay. Well, yeah. David.
Well, tomorrow we...
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item eight C was deleted. We'll go to item nine, discussion authorization approval. Consider amending the policy for leasing non-commercial right-of-ways per Mayor Hill. I don't know how, why I always get these good ones. We have, I don't know if all of you are even aware of it, but the city has vacated alleys in the past, and we have entered into leases with property owners for, go ahead, go ahead, don't worry. We've entered into leases with adjacent property owners. And there was a, and we've, and what's happened is that there's a, individuals that want to purchase a property that was leased to, obviously, the present owner. And, and purchasing the property, now they want to lease the property, and I have no problem with that happening. The only thing is, on the policy for leasing non-commercial rights, so, item nine, it says, notice must be provided to the adjoining property owner to ascertain interest in the lease. And the way this is set up, these people have been maintaining the property forever, and I think that's what's happened throughout the city, and I, I don't see any reason to do that, and it would have put their closing back on their house, and I just, I don't, my recommendation is that we eliminate item nine from our policy.
Is that legal?
If the property is already owned by the city and the city's just leasing it, yes. I think this may have been, because this policy was adopted back in 1998, it might have been a carryover from some policy relating to vacating public right-of-ways.
Yeah.
Where, you know, then you deal with adjacent property owners on both sides. But if this property has already been vacated, and the city owns it, it's just a matter of somebody voicing some interest in leasing it from the city, there's nothing, no requirement of the city to reach out to the adjacent property owner, if it's already been vacated. This is post-vacation property, and it's not necessarily all vacated property, but any property that the city may own.
Right. Exactly, yeah. Did we vacate that, or is that?
No, this one's still...
I'm sorry, we haven't vacated the property. I'm sorry. That may have been what confused you, Jim. That is city-owned property that we're just leasing to them, and they're maintaining the property.
The only time you deal with all sets of adjacent property owners is in a vacation setting, which this is not. This is just a lease setting.
Right.
So, there is no necessity for...
Is it? But is that...
This is on Bethel Boulevard.
Bethel.
It's 30...
32 something.
Yeah.
3219.
Yes, 3219. Is there a motion? So moved. We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Consider entering into lease involving the use of that portion of the west, 200 feet of the east-west alley north and adjoining 3219 Bethel Boulevard for Mayor Hill. And this is ordinance, leasing the property to the new buyer, and there is also a lease agreement in there, and it's the property we were just talking about. Is there a motion? So moved. A motion?
Second.
In a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine C, consider waiving managers' fidelity bond raffle application requirement for, clerk, Burke Kemper.
The Newport School PTO submitted a 50/50 raffle application, looking to conduct a raffle for educational fundraising purposes. During a pancake breakfast, they're having an Applebee's. The code provides that they provide a manager's fidelity bond in order to be granted the license for the raffle. The code allows waiver of that bond requirement, but by city council action only. So, their application, they checked that they wanted the council to consider waiving that bond, and that's the request before you.
The reason I'd be in favor of a reduction of a fee to civic church and service organizations is because of what they contribute to the community. And that's kind of a, an unknown variable, how much these organizations contribute. But there have been some people that have researched this and tried to put a definition or a value, quantitative value on what churches provide for communities. And some research was done at the University of Pennsylvania by a professor there in the Social Sciences Department, Ram Nan. And he's been doing this for quite some time. And in 1997, based on his research, he felt like the average congregation contributed $140,000 to a community just by the services that they provide. Counseling, volunteer services, building and environmental help. And he's got a whole list of things that churches provide. But in 2011, he revised that statistic. And I guess with the difference of the, the value of the dollar, came up with a number of $476,000 that the average congregation contributes to a community. So there is value in what these civic and church groups contribute. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this revision of our building permit fees.
We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. I would like to discuss, I guess I'd like to throw out a couple of other things that we could, I guess that one of the things that you said just made me sit back is if, I, I think if we're going to adopt a policy, people can come and make requests that they be waived. We can, everybody can come to the city council. But I think we have to, if we're going to adopt this policy and give this to our building department to enforce, that we have to make a commitment that we're probably going to, to stick with the policy. But it would be few and far between because I think everybody needs to be treated the same, and that's what this will do.
Yeah.
And the other thing that I just wanted to bring up is, again, this was one suggestion. If, if you think that, and we haven't talked about this, so i- if you think that it might be a good idea that if somebody comes in with a building permit fee of, and let me back up. A bill, waiving a building permit fee of $22,000 was like, oh my, I mean, that's a lot of money. I don't mind so much waiving permit fees for $400 or $200 or $150. But with something this big, it was like, oh my goodness. So I guess if you would want to consider, I mean, you could amend this to say that anything under $1,000 will get waived at 100%. Or if you just want to keep everything at 50%, that's something that we can, we can still decide here tonight. If you want to have steps, or if you just want to go with the 50% reduction for everybody, that's, that's fine with me.
I'd like the 50%.
Okay.
You know, if there's extenuating circumstances that, or we're not, in, in a building project that would warrant waiving a, a permit fee, then we could take that into consideration. But otherwise, our, I think our fee structure should stand. And I, I think a 50% is, is a good measure.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
So Commissioner, you can pick up your check and lay out.
Okay, thank you, Comrade. Let me clear something up if I may. When we went into the director of building, we used the way of fees as a starting point. We did not expect the fees to be waived. In my personal opinion, I do not, I, I feel that this building fee should not be waived. But since that was excessively high, then we was always, you know, prepared to pay 50% of the $1,251. So, and the check is in the, in your pocket. In fact, two checks, in fact.
Right.
So we can take a lot of checks.
Yep. Well, yeah.
Well, tomorrow we'll be back.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item 8C was deleted. We'll go to item nine, discussion authorization approval. Consider amending the policy for leasing non-commercial right-of-ways per Mayor Hill. I don't know how, why I always get these good ones. We have, I, I don't know if all of you are even aware of it, but the city has vacated alleys in the past, and we have entered into leases with property owners for, go ahead, go ahead, don't, don't worry. We've entered into leases with adjacent property owners. And there was a pow, and we've, and what's happened is that there's a, individuals that want to purchase a property that was leased to, obviously, the present owner. And, and purchasing the property, now they want to lease the property. And I have no problem with that happening. The only thing is, on, on the policy for leasing non-commercial rights away, item nine, it says, notice must be provided to the adjoining property owner to ascertain interest in the lease. And the way this is set up, these people have been maintaining the property forever, and I think that's what's happened throughout the city. And I, I don't see any reason to do that. And it would have put their closing back on their house. And I just, I don't, my recommendation is that we eliminate item nine from our policy.
Is that legal?
If the property is already owned by the city and the city's just leasing it, yes. I think this may have been, because this policy was adopted back in 1998, it might have been a carryover from some policy relating to vacating public right-of-ways.
Yeah.
Where, you know, then you deal with adjacent property owners on both sides. But if this property has already been vacated and the city owns it, it's just a matter of somebody voicing some interest in leasing it from the city, there's nothing, no requirement of the city to reach out to the adjacent property owner. If it's already been vacated, this is post-vacation property. And it's not necessarily all vacated property, but any property that the city may own.
Right. Exactly, yeah. Did we vacate that, or is that?
No, this one's still.
I'm sorry, we haven't vacated the property. I'm sorry, that may, may have been what confused you, Jim. That is city-owned property that we're just leasing to them and they're maintaining the property.
The only time you deal with both sets of adjacent property owners is in a vacation setting, which this is not. This is just a lease setting.
Right.
So there is no, no necessity for.
Is it, but is that?
This is on Bethel Boulevard.
Bethel.
It's 30...
32 something.
Yeah.
3219.
Yes, 3219. Is there a motion? Shall move. We have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Consider entering into lease involving the use of that portion of the west, 200 feet of the east-west alley north and adjoining 3219 Bethel Boulevard for Mayor Hill. And this is ordinance leasing the property to the new buyer. And there is also a lease agreement in there. And it's the property we were just talking about.
Is there a motion? Shall move. A motion?
Second.
In a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C, consider waiving manager's fidelity bond raffle application requirement for, clerk, Burke Kemper.
The Newport School PTO submitted a 50/50, 50/50 raffle application, looking to conduct a raffle for educational fundraising purposes during a pancake breakfast they're having at Applebee's. The code provides that they provide a manager's fidelity bond in order to be granted the license for the raffle. The code allows waiver of that bond requirement, but by city council action only. So their application, they checked that they wanted the council to consider waiving that bond, and that's the request before you.
Is there a motion?
So.
A motion in a second.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I just wonder if we should do something similar with these kinds of raffles for nonprofit groups? Because they often come before the council, but could we not give the clerk the ability to waive these requirements for nonprofits?
I have the ability per code to waive the fees, but I do, we could amend the code and put the two together.
Okay. Something to think about. She has, yeah, this is for bond.
Oh.
Bonding the person who's running the raffle.
Okay.
And I'm not, I, I might want, I might want that to come before the council.
Yeah.
Okay. Because that's, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9D has been taken care of by our action earlier. Item 9E, consider approval.
So that, consider. You amended the policy, but you need a reduction in the motion?
This.
No, we amended the policy, so now the policy's in effect.
Oh, so this is not.
The policy's in effect, so they, they don't need to ask us for a reduction.
So this item should be strictly amended, motion to.
Oh, we need to, okay.
Yeah, so it's not left unadmitted.
Item 9D, we need a motion to.
Delete this item.
Delete from the agenda.
Because there's no further action necessary.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion? A second?
Second.
And we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9E, consider approval of proposal for preliminary analysis to determine if the consolidation of the City of Zion and the Beach Park Fire Protection District is feasible for Chief Lewis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you, you have a, a proposal from the Illinois Fire Chiefs Association. So you're aware that we've been working on our request for proposal between ourselves, Beach Park, and Newport was in it for a while, but their, their board has chosen to back out. This request for proposal, or the consolidations of fire departments, fire protection districts, municipal departments to some extent, and dispatch centers is quite a hot topic in the state of Illinois right now. And so our request for proposal has made its way all the way down to Springfield. I've been contacted by Senator Bush. She's interested in it, she's developing a task force for consolidations. It made its way to the associate, or the affiliated firefights of Illinois because they're in the process of working with departments consolidating. And finally, it made its way to Illinois Fire Chiefs. So the executive director for the Illinois Fire Chiefs is our retired chief, Tim Sashkow, with the Mundelein Fire Department. He's a pretty close friend of mine. He contacted me and said, we'd like to sit down with you and just go over your request. We've been doing a lot of these in the state, and if you want it to be successful, let me give you some points. So he met with myself, Director Nabel, Beach Park's chief, my deputy chief, and, and we sat down, and basically, his opinion was, with everything going on in the state right now, as far as legislation, and some of this was backed up by our attorneys that alerted us as well, his suggestion is our request for proposal was too broad in nature. He says, you really have to look at this in little steps. Because if you go with that full proposal, flat out like it was written, you're going to hit points that you just can't succeed with it. A lot of it has to do with voter approval from each district, dispatch consolidations, district versus municipality, and so on and so forth. So his suggestion, and he showed us some samples he did with the City of Bloomington, and another one, Darian Woodridge, that they're going through right now, is to actually look at this, do a SWOT analysis, do what they call dirty mapping, where they look at the calls that your district runs, where they run it, what Beach Park runs, how many, where they're located, and, and look at what they call a functional consolidation to start with. In other words, how do we take what you do and what they're doing and put them together? Which could be responding with the closest ambulance versus just Zion goes Zion and Beach Park goes to Beach Park, sharing equipment, things along that nature. So their suggestion first, before you make any big expenses on consolidation studies, is to do the SWOT analysis. So they, they gave us an offer, they do allow that, and they said, we'll put a plan together for you, and we'll come in, we'll do that SWOT analysis for you, and we'll tell you whether it's worth pursuing a request for proposal, and what you're looking to do with consolidation, or it's not worth it, or what steps you should take. So before you, you have a proposal. It's in the amount of $7,050. That would be split 50% with Beach Park. They would come in, they would sit an eight-hour day with us and do a full SWOT analysis. They would do their dirty mapping, and then they would come, present to the council whether this is a decision we should go with, or not, or to what extent. So before you, I have the contract or the proposal, and I'm just asking that, if this is something we want to pursue, that we approve this and, and get the ball rolling.
Chief, has this been to the Village Board, Beach Park?
I don't know if he's taken it to them. I don't know when their board meeting is, but it was going to go to them.
Okay. Would it be the exact same proposal going to the Village Board?
Yeah, exactly the same.
All right. Then I'd like to suggest that we make some changes to this proposal. One is that on page two, under the draft plan review, that we, we add an outcome to this analysis, that we have a timeline and a process for doing this consolidation. So if we're going to get together with some of the experts in fire prevention, and some chiefs, and people in the city council, and we come to the conclusion that consolidation is, is a benefit to both our communities, I'd like to have that group of people come together with a timeline and a process for how we do it, rather than just saying, you ought to do it, and leave it at that. So that's one. Another thing, I know it says here that dates and times for the workshop be mutually agreed upon, but I, I'd like that in writing when we want to get that started. And my suggestion is, as soon as possible, I think we mentioned, maybe November or December to, to get that in line. So that, that'd be my suggestions to add to this.
And the only reason it's not in writing on the dates here is because we have to approve it first, and then you have such a large group that we have to get, get together for the SWOT analysis, that you can't put a date in there that people can't meet. So their suggestion was, once we approve this, then we get a date, and then we get all the players together. Because this is going to consist of your chiefs and deputy chiefs of each department. Newport's chief will still participate. The mayor, the commissioner from here, mayor commissioners from Beach Park, board members from Beach Park, and external stakeholders are all part of the SWOT analysis. So that's a lot of coordinating the dates.
Other than that, I think this is the approach we ought to take.
I, I'm, I'm just can't, I couldn't figure out, what is this going to tell?
This is going to look at, right now, if we send a request for proposal, we're basically saying, we want to take the two departments and merge them. With all the consolidation going in, that puts you, first off, you could go for this and say, it's great. Beach Park residents say, no, we don't want it, it fails. Beach Park says, yes. Zion says, no. It fails. So now you spent, however many we spent on request for proposal, for nothing. So what they're looking at is, let's look at what you have, and is it feasible even for your departments to consolidate to start with? So that's what this is. They look at your call volume, they look at your personnel, training, equipment, vehicle staff, the layout of Beach Park's district, the layout of the City of Zion, your response times. Can both departments work together to meet those guidelines, or will it not work? That way, they can say, yes, go for it. It might work for you, or no, it's not going to work for you through the municipalities. Don't go in that direction, maybe look at this direction if you want. That's what they do.
And then after this, there would be an RFP?
Then after this would be an RFP, they get sent out for anybody to bid up.
Okay, now, our attorneys have indicated that there are some difficulties with dissolving, like dissolving the city.
Correct.
Fire department. And then you have to have a referendum to form a district, and there could be timing issues in there, and is, is this even possible?
I think this is a, this is a different direction than, than creating a fire protection district, which, because of recent legislation in Springfield, I, I think it makes it much more complex and difficult for cities to do that, because you have to disband the fire department, a municipal fire department, to create that fire protection district that we're talking about. And I, I think that puts us at a great risk.
I think we want to really look closer in here.
We're not talking about a fire protection.
No. We're not even at the district.
We're merging the two fire services together.
Well, we're not even looking at the, merging the two fire services yet together. You have different aspects we have to look at this. So communities have done it. So if you go across the state line up towards North Shore, it's now called the North Shore Fire Department in Wisconsin. That consists of Caledonia and Greendale and several other departments. They just did this about 10 years ago. When you consolidate, you lose your title, you lose your name, you lose everything. So we would no longer be the Zion Fire Rescue Department, we would no longer be the Beach Park Fire Department, we would be the Quad One Fire Department, we would be the Lake Shore Fire Department, whatever we want to call it. But you lose your patch, everything starts from scratch, and we're our own entity. Now each city, district could still fund it into this group, but you're functioning as one department in all three.
Where do you get your funding?
Same thing. So taxpayers are still paying to the municipality, the municipality is still paying to this fire department now, that is jointly shared by everybody. It's a complex thing. It's not just, today we're done and here we are. What we're looking at right now, and the best direction to start is, you're not going to come up with a world when we're going to save millions of dollars tomorrow, but we start working with Beach Park, and as you take these baby steps, now, if we have a call at 21st and Green Bay, which would normally be Zion Station Two goes, if they're out, Station One goes, Beach Park Station Two at Green Bay and 29th Streets to close the station, they're going to respond for us. And they're there quicker. We're doing a lot of this now. On a structured fire, Beach Park, Newport, Zion, Pleasant Prairie, Winthroparbor, we all respond automatically. One tone goes out, everybody goes. That's a form of consolidation. We're taking this one step further, where now us and Beach Park are going to function as one team, two departments but one team. We might respond to the trailer parks on Sharon Road, when they're short, they're responding here. If we have an engine that goes out of service, one of their engines is going to fill into our station automatically and vice versa. So those are the beginning steps.
Okay, when, when we were, when this originally came up, we were talking about forming a fire district with Beach Park, Zion, and Newport Township.
Right. That is a much more complex.
Okay.
Issue.
And it's my understanding that Winthroparbor did not want to participate in that, and Newport did not want to participate in that also.
Correct.
Have they been contacted about this new concept, just consolidating all four districts into one?
Yes. Well, they haven't been, because the concept is still the same. We're still moving in that direction of joining, we're just not there yet. The thing is, we don't want to go from here to here. They're saying, let's go here, 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 and here.
Right, no, but what I, what I'm saying is, there's a, I, I think there's a distinct difference between a district and consolidating these, these, let's say, upon four.
Right.
Fire departments. And have they been approached about consolidating rather than just a district? And then maybe we could split this cost in four ways.
Probably they ha, I know they have not. Newport will not. I can tell you, for matters I can't discuss here, Newport will not at this time.
Okay.
Winthroparbor, I would put on the load to not going to participate in that.
And now, does Winthroparbor have a fire district?
Winthroparbor has a fire protection district, but it's paper district only. So that's your area, Green Bay Road, 29th Street, up to 173, small portions of that. That's a paper district only, they have no personnel, they have no equipment, they have nothing. So they contract with Winthroparbor to respond to anything in that district. So they really have nothing to bring to the table, tax-wise or not.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can approach the harbor. My recommendation is, I would still just move forward with this now, and we can just ask Winthroparbor, do you want to participate, sit in on the meeting? If not, don't. We can bill them later. I mean, right now, we're going to pay this entire cost ourselves, and then Beach Park will reimburse us the other half. So it's just a matter of invoicing for another third or another quarter. So. It is a much more complex.
Do we have a motion?
Topic than people once thought it would be, of just, let's do it. There's a lot more involved to it.
Sounds like it could be simple. But nothing's simple, I understand that.
Between agencies, it could be simple. Making it legal is not simple.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this recommendation to do a SWOT analysis and GIS mapping with Zion Fire Department and Beach Park Fire Protection District.
And do you want to add those two recommendations?
Yes, and I'm adding those two. I, I guess I would just retain the timeline and process part of it, since it does mention that a date and a time and date for the workshops will be mutually agreed upon. So just that one suggested change, that we include a timeline and a process to the, the outcome of this analysis. Is that all right, Chief?
I can ask him. Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Do you have that motion, Ben? We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call her own.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 9F is consider appointments to boards and commissions for Mayor Hill. And I am appointing, there's a nostalgia days committee, and most of the members are in place, there will be a couple of more additions coming. But I would like to appoint Blake Rogers, Donna Flamini, Sam Rogers, and Randy Noor, terms expiring 8/31/2016. Katie Flamini, Steve Dumian, Frank Flamini, and Adam Miller, terms expiring 8/31/2017. And Diane Vello and Mike Pabecki, terms expiring 8/31/2018.
Do we have a motion?
Shall move.
You have a motion in a second. Discussion?
I have, yes. I really like the nostalgia days. It's a, it's a great event in the city. But I guess, I just have this question, why is it a commission of the city rather than just a separate committee that provides nostalgia days for the city?
I'll attempt to answer that, and if I am mistaken, I'll ask Commissioner Flamini to chime in. It's my understanding that, it was, it was a couple of years ago, that the nostalgia days committee had pretty much disbanded, and that there was not going to be a nostalgia days committee. And if it didn't, if the city didn't take it on as a commission, there wouldn't be a nostalgia day. So at that point, the city decided that it was valuable enough to the city to provide the event, and so the city decided to get involved, and it became a city commission. And it's the same thing now with Jubilee Days. Jubilee Days is a city commission. That was something that was, they were struggling, and the city decided that they should become city commissions, so.
I guess I just should say that, as we look at fiscal year 2017, and the amount of deficit that we're facing, I think commissions like this might have a difficult time in terms of funding, not in opera. If, if the commission, if this nostalgia days committee is looking to get the bulk of funding from the city, and we need to get $1.5 million out of our budget, essential services are going to be what we, we operate with, and nostalgia days, Jubilee days, I think will face some budget cuts. And I think I just, I wanted to say that.
Can I address that briefly? When, when we decided to take it on, ju, just for clarification, I know it's under, it's difficult for people to understand, the pots of money concept that the city has to deal with, but there are no general fund dollars that go to fund nostalgia days. But there's sponsorships, you know, entry fees, things of that, that fund a bulk of the nostalgia days cost, then hotel motel tax dollars fund the remainder. If we didn't have nostalgia days, those hotel motel tax funds would be over there available, but those cannot be used to fund police salaries, public works, things of that nature. Statutorily, we can't use that. So freeing up that money just leaves it in that pot where we can't touch it. So, you know, we have, we have that with TIF dollars, we have that with, there's special tax levies for street and bridge, you know, we can't use that for other purposes, either through legal restrictions or statutory restrictions. So if it ever got to a point where the nostalgia days was needing additional funding for something like that, it definitely had to be a discussion. But we, we might. But we, we monitored that closely, passed the hotel-motel tax budget to be enough to supplement the, the, any, any additional funding needed for nostalgia days.
Okay.
There's a fine line there, I know.
Was there a motion?
Motion. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. In planning a zoning commission appointment, I would like to appoint Madeline Santana, and her term will, will expire on April 30th of 2017. Is there a motion?
Shall move. A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number 10 is departmental commentary. Department heads have anything?
No.
Okay. And now, item number 11 is announcements. October 20th, at 6:30, is a Zion Township meeting, and at 7 o'clock is followed by the Zion City Council meeting. October 31st, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., is a Zion trick-or-treating, and it's October 30th at, oh my, there's the, the trick-or-treating through the Shiloh Park, and I can't remember what time it is.
What time?
I think it's 3:00 to 5:00.
Starts at 5:00.
Starts at 5:00.
And then walks to there until 7:00, October 2nd.
And it goes to the Park District party, and that's on the 30th of October.
Starts at 5:00 on Friday, on October 30th.
Yes. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Item 12 is closed session pursuant to five Illinois statutes, 120 slash 2, open meetings for discussion of personnel, which would be compensation, collective bargaining, proposed patrol officer, FOP union contract, and the sale of real estate. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Shall move.
You have a motion? And a second? Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?